Okay, welcome everyone to our, uh, our meeting and if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Call call.
Councilor Atkinson.
Councilor Cola.
Here.
Here.
Councilor Peonesa.
Here.
Councilor Prusen.
Here.
Councilor Rosso.
Councilor Vich.
She said she's coming, I believe.
Okay.
But we'll see when she shows up. Okay, well, welcome, everybody. It's so nice out, we should have held this outside, I guess, huh? So, we're gonna start first tonight, we have Jonathan from Brightfeeds giving his update, he is on Zoom. Hello, Jonathan.
Hi, Mayor Kaczynski.
Uh, so, yeah, go ahead, we're, you know, just go on with your update, appreciate you giving us an update on what's going on.
Yeah, thanks much for having me, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we're good.
Okay, great. Um, on behalf of the entire Brightfeeds team, we're incredibly grateful for your patience and efforts in working with us to fully resolve all odor and sound issues. I want to reiterate that we are committed to being good long-term neighbor to the town of Berlin and doing everything in our power to fully resolve all issues. Regarding updates on our end since the town's last in-person meeting in January and the online update in February, I'm happy to report that the thermal oxidizer shipped on Monday, March 17th from California and is scheduled to be delivered to our facility by Monday, March 24th. As we've stated before, this is the highest level odor solution available on the market and we are confident that it'll provide a permanent odor solution. Commissioning the equipment will be a multi-week process and then we will begin operations and testing with the new control equipment over the following few weeks with a target completion date of mid-April. We appreciate the town's efforts in help helping us obtain our building permit for the concrete pad where the equipment will be placed upon delivery. We've lined up and prepared all the necessary vendors for the installation and they're ready to proceed as soon as we receive the equipment. I assure you that we did everything practically possible to expedite the manufacturer's delivery. Traditionally, oxidizers take significantly longer to manufacture as they are custom-designed for each facility. As many of you are aware, we've reduced our production and are currently processing between 7:30 a.m. and 7:30 p.m. to address concerns in the interim. We also have limited the materials we are processing and are reject rejecting certain feedstocks to help with odor control until the RTO is installed. Regarding sound, we've reviewed the town's report and are working with our sound consultant to incorporate all recommendations into our planning and process improvements following the RTO installation. This includes flying personnel in from the fan manufacturer site in Minnesota to personally witness and oversee the changes we're making to our fan and process. We're working to ensure that once the RTO is installed, it will provide a consistent solution for both permanent odor and sound control. We'll continue to collaborate with the town and Connecticut Deep on the project throughout the installation process and we will keep everyone updated on our progress until the RTO is in place and operational. We're currently working hard to make sure that the installation is successful and look forward to meeting in person when these changes are implemented and we have tests demonstrating the results. I can't stress enough, we remain 100% committed to thoroughly addressing all odor and noise concerns and are doing everything in our power to come to a full resolution. We'll continue to listen to and work with the community members, the town manager, the mayor, town council, Representative Vich, Senator Loebz, and Connecticut Deep throughout the RTO installation process and after and really appreciate you guys again, your patience and giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, I do have to jump, but I look forward to coming in person and meeting with everyone um, as we make these changes, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, thank you, Jonathan. Uh, next.
Mayor, I do, I do have one comment, if I can, please.
You can.
Jonathan, I do appreciate your update, you still on? Guess you got off.
Yeah, I'm still on.
Okay, I do appreciate your update and given, given us the information, but with this most important meeting, this is the third time that we have not had direct representation here at Town Hall. And, uh, my feeling is, is that there's people here that need to ask questions, see somebody here personally, answer the town council's questions, answering Deep's questions, and most importantly, answering the residents' questions. This has not been done for three, uh, the last three meetings and, you know, it does, I, it does question my, well, I do question the credibility and transparency of what's being done without having direct representation here.
Uh, you know, I definitely appreciate that, we're, uh, hard at work on implementing these changes and
I know you are, but we still should have representation here at these meetings.
Understood.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you would wait, Jonathan, I don't know if the council has any questions for him or, 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 uh, do you have any questions while he's still here for a moment?
Well, you know, I think we should have a plan laid out, uh, you know, instead of giving us mid-April, whatever, you know, you said you're gonna, got the 24th, the thermal oxidizer's coming in, you said people are lined up, are they confirmed, uh, to come in? What's your testing cycle gonna be like, when do you anticipate, uh, uh, results from the first round of testing, so we would have this information and have that laid out on a spreadsheet and presented to, uh, the mayor and the town, and the town manager and the town council.
Absolutely, we'll, uh, we'll get working on that.
We'll get that, we get that to the town manager, Jonathan.
Yeah, no, uh, we're, we're in pretty regular communication and I will, yes, definitely work to, uh, to get that over as soon as possible.
Okay, great, any other questions? We're good? Okay. All right, uh, let's go on, we have our acoustical engineers, like to have them update everybody, Tessa is on the line, uh, they did some testing, uh, last week, um, obviously noise testing, so we'll let her give an update, Tessa.
Hello, everyone, uh, my name is Tessa Wern from SH Acoustics and yes, last week we did some acoustical testing for, uh, continuing the noise concerns around town, we know that there have been some concerns of lower frequency tones that are being heard in the evenings and we are working with the town to discover what those tones are with Brightfeeds not running after 7:30 p.m. We have confirmed that they are not the source of these lowered frequencies that people around town are hearing and we will be continuing our testing throughout the next couple of weeks just to get some confirmation on where these tones are coming from and what we can do to mitigate it.
Okay, thank, thank you, Tessa, so the last few weeks, last week and, uh, before, I think you did a couple tests in different, different locations too, because we had some, uh, other, uh, information from other areas of town, uh, I think specifically over at, uh, Fairview Drive there, you, you tested in that whole area and nothing, obviously nothing attributed to Brightfeeds, but some other low-level noise, correct, but within our ordinance?
Yes, that is correct, so our testing was throughout the town of Berlin, Fairview Drive, Christian Lane, Messerio Lane, Juniper Lane, Worthington Ridge, so surrounding both Route 9, Berlin Turnpike and just surrounding areas of Brightfeeds and we see no noise, noise code compliance issues.
Uh, and I, you know, I, we don't, we don't need to get into all the, if we even know, but that low-level noise, uh, comment or, I mean, I know it's below, I, I, I think you explained to us the other day when we were speaking with you that it's, uh, the, um, the noise that you, uh, heard was almost below what humans could hear, right, I mean, it's a very low level, some, some folks might hear it, some folks might not, but we don't, we don't know the source of that, right?
Correct, the tone that is coming onto our radar is at the threshold of human hearing, so it is more of a tone that is felt rather than heard.
So, uh, that's interesting and, and different, pretty much consistent through the different areas you measured or different, a little bit different, um, levels and, and different areas, out of curiosity.
We are seeing some fluctuation in different areas and that is why we have to do some additional testing just to see if we can find any patterns and work with the town to see what other mechanical pipe, piping, plumbing going through the town might be contributing to that tone.
Yes.
If I may, Mayor.
Sure.
Um, when you did these tests, was this done throughout the day, different time periods? Or after 7:00 at night, can you tell me when the testing was done?
This testing was done at between 10:30 and 11:00 p.m., so it was after traffic hours for the most part.
10:30 a.m. to?
Yeah.
So 10:30 p.m. to what time, I'm sorry?
11:30 p.m.
So just within that hour timeframe?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, uh, questions up there, any other questions? Question, good? All right, so, obviously with the testing too, as we, you know, obviously heard, this equipment will be installed, I guess by, uh, mid-April, what, what we will continue to do with our engineer, of course, is, once that equipment is installed and the fans are repaired, replaced, whatever, whatever is recommended by the, um, the engineers that they're using, we'll do some more testing, of course, and once it's all up and running, I mean, now it's, you know, it is what it is now and we've, uh, certainly controlled it to the best we can, I think to this point, um, with them not running at night as well, but once that's all installed and, uh, the fans are, are updated or replaced, we'll, we will do our own testing in the same areas of town and see how that goes and hopefully we'll have some good results with that, so that's where that stands with our engineer, we'll keep them, of course, on the, on the payroll till we're finished with this whole process and everybody is satisfied that, uh, the noise is, um, you know, controlled and not, not a disturbance to, to the neighborhood, so. Um, all right, thank you, Tessa, appreciate it, uh, and now we'll go on to Deep. Right, next, huh, oh, I'm sorry, Deep, yeah, Deep, we changed.
So we're going out of order because I'm gonna talk about all of the information that we're going to give, EPH and then DPH, we'll talk about what they're gonna do with it, we thought it was, uh, um, more logical order, so I see Jake Felton, Director of the Air Enforcement Division with Deep, and I think I've met most of you, um, before, I do see a couple new faces, so in the past couple meetings, I've given a lot of background info and in the interest of time, I wasn't gonna do that tonight, but if, if you want the additional background info after the meeting, I'm happy to, or during the Q and A, I'm happy to provide that. So, um, I, I will summarize a little bit of his, history though, um, first of all, we sincerely thank Berlin community members for bringing their concerns regarding Brightfeeds to our attention and for their continued engagement. We certainly understand and appreciate your frustrations with the odors and other environmental impacts that have been described relative to the Brightfeeds facility. Again, in the interest of time, I'll briefly summarize Deep's involvement in this matter and then we'll talk about next steps. If there's anyone here in person or online who has not been present at the past few meetings and would like additional background information about our role and jurisdiction in this matter, I'm happy to provide as much after the meeting or during Q and A. As you know, we, Deep, have received several complaints over the past year and a half relating to the Brightfeeds facility and our staff has made multiple inspections of the site and surrounding areas in 2023 and 2024. As a result of these inspections, we issued a notice of violation of Connecticut's Regulatory Odor Nuisance Standard at Section 22A-174-23 of the Regulations of Connecticut State Agencies. We remain in contact with Brightfeeds representatives on an ongoing basis to continue to reinforce the importance of expeditiously eliminating nuisance odors and resolving the open violation notice. Brightfeeds is now in the process of procuring and installing a regenerative thermal oxidizer, or RTO, to control emissions of odoriferous compounds. An RTO is a highly robust air pollution control device that is commonly used to control emissions of volatile organic compounds that give rise to odor. It is generally considered more effective than other odor mitigation technologies. Brightfeeds has indicated that the RTO, and I know, you know, Jonathan just mentioned this, shipped from California this past Monday or two days ago. Shipping time is estimated to be one week and the installation crew is scheduled to arrive on-site next Monday in five days to begin the commissioning process. Meanwhile, Brightfeeds has indicated that the gas line for the RTO has been plumbed, the electrical service needed to support the RTO has been installed and the pad on which the RTO will rest has been poured. The commissioning process is expected to take approximately three weeks. On November 4th, 2024, we issued a test requirement letter to Brightfeeds. We required that Brightfeeds test its dryer stack for several pollutants including total volatile organic compounds, speciated volatile organic compounds and particulate matter. Brightfeeds was required to submit a test protocol within 15 days of the transmittal of the test requirement letter. Brightfeeds complied with this requirement and we provided extensive feedback on the test protocol to ensure that testing would occur under representative operating conditions and that the proper EPA-approved test methods would be utilized. In general, stack testing in Connecticut and across the country is performed by a third-party test contractor and audited by Deep staff. Such testing occurred on January 10th, 2025, in the presence of four Deep staff who were monitoring both the process and the performance of the test methods. Brightfeeds was required to report the results of the test program within 60 days of the test date consistent with state and federal law. We received the test report last week and have prioritized its review. We're currently finalizing our review of the emission calculations to ensure that they're complete and accurate. Based on the test results reviewed thus far, it is clear that Brightfeeds requires a Clean Air Act permit pursuant to Section 22A-174-3A of the Regulations of Connecticut State Agencies. We advise Brightfeeds of the need for an air permit, also known, in this case, as a new source review permit, and last week, Brightfeeds representatives met with our staff for a pre-application meeting during which the procedural elements of the permitting process were reviewed. As you'll recall, based on the very preliminary stack test data available to us immediately after the test program took place in January and given that Brightfeeds was unable to move forward with the proposed dispersion enhancements to increase atmospheric dilution of the flu gas, Brightfeeds agreed to implement interim mitigation measures as of January 5th, January 15th, 2025, pending installation of the RTO. These mitigation measures, which are still in place today, include reducing operating hours by 50%, limiting operation to normal business hours with, which Jonathan just clarified, we're 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. Um, next, reducing the capacity at which material is processed in the plant and finally rejecting certain feedstocks like raw dough and frozen pasta that could reasonably be anticipated to give rise to odor when processed. Brightfeeds has implemented real-time monitoring to verify, to verify the efficacy of these interim mitigation measures. Monitoring data collected thus far indicates that the feedstock management, management measure alone in which certain feedstocks are excluded from processing has resulted in an approximately 50% reduction in stack VOC emissions. We are aware that community members have asked questions regarding health effects. These questions, of course, are best answered by public health professionals. To that end, we're working with the Connecticut Department of Public Health, or DPH, staff to provide them with the data needed to perform a health assessment. Such data is extrapolated from the January stack test. DPH has specifically indicated that, that its health assessment is based on ambient pollution, ambient pollutant concentration data as opposed to stack pollutant concentration data. Stack concentrations are much higher than ambient concentrations due to dispersion dynamics and dilution, often orders of magnitude higher. Therefore, once the stack test calculations have been finalized, which is happening right now, Deep staff will model the stack pollutant concentration results in order to derive ambient data. This is a sophisticated dispersion model that takes some time to run. We anticipate completing the modeling runs needed by DPH in mid-April, but now I'm actually anticipating early April, barring any unforeseen issues with the stack test calculations, which so far have not arisen. Our investigation remains open and active and we continue to work collaboratively with partner agencies such as the local health district, DPH and OAG, the Office of the Attorney General, as we seek to the full resolution of this matter. Our expectation is that Brightfeeds work diligently to complete the RTO procurement and obtain a new source reviewer Clean Air Act permit. Thank you, um, DPH, great, and we'll do questions.
Next up, DPH, yes, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Meg Harvey, Connecticut, I'm a epidemiologist and health assessor at the Connecticut Department of Public Health. This is my first meeting, so I wanna take a couple seconds to just tell you who, who I am and a little bit about what I do at DPH. Uh, I am a human health, uh, risk assessor, health assessor. I supervise a toxicology group at the Department of Public Health and, um, I have four staff who are toxicologists and health assessors. I've been at DPH for 25 years now and in that time, I've worked on a lot of sites across Connecticut where communities have concerns about exposures to contaminants in the environment. Health assessor, what does that really mean? It means that I evaluate, identify and evaluate exposures and health risks to contaminants in the environment. Uh, I know there has been some frustration at prior meetings that, uh, DPH was not allowed, uh, not, um, able to send a representative and, um, I just wanted to assure everyone that we have been working closely with your local health director and with Deep, kind of, you know, behind the scenes. Now that we're getting close, as Jacob said, we're getting close to actually having, um, air data that we can work with, it made, it makes sense, um, to, to come and for me to talk about what we're planning to do with the data when we get it. So it generally, um, DPH's role with, in situations and sites like this is to put it the most simply, we provide technical assistance to, to Deep, to towns, to local health departments, to the community to help better understand exposures and health risks from contaminants in the environment, and in this case, we're talking about air emissions from Brightfeeds. More specifically, what we are going to be doing, um, is, as, as Jacob said, we're going to be fairly soon receiving air concentrations for different chemicals that represent, based on, on Deep's modeling, represent what is in the ambient air where people are and where they could be breathing the air, not what's coming out of the stack because no one is up on the roof breathing that stack air 24/7. Um, that's why we, we really need to work with ambient air concentrations, not stack, um, emissions. Um, because as, as Jacob said, there's dilution and dispersion that occurs. So what we are going to be doing is, is performing something called a risk assessment and, um, what, what a risk assessment is, is it's really just a tool that helps us better understand the potential public health impacts from an exposure. In other words, looking at how likely is it that an exposure to a chemical is large enough and occurs for a long enough period of time that someone who is exposed might experience a health impact? Importantly, a risk assessment doesn't predict whether there is health, a health outcome or whether there's not a health outcome. It rather provides us with sort of the likelihood or the riskiness to health of an exposure. So, what we will be doing, each, each chemical that has a concentration that is given to us by, by Deep, we identify toxicity values. The toxicity value just tells us how potent the particular chemical is to cause harm in humans. Most of our data comes from studies in animals. We don't generally develop these toxicity values ourselves, we get them from typically the federal government, from the Environmental Protection Agency, from the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, that's a mouth, mouthful, so we say ATSDR, it's part of the Centers for Disease Control. Sometimes states like California will have toxicity values that, that we can use. Toxicity values are chemical-specific and they're based on the critical effect, generally again, from, from a laboratory, uh, animal study. Critical, critical effect meaning the, um, the effect, the harmful effect that occurred at the lowest dose. So the critical effect and whether, what population that critical effect occurred in and we, and it's always the most sensitive population. So that could be children, it could be, depending on the chemical, could be children, it could be the developing fetus, it could be a, a lactating woman, it, it just depends on the chemical. So, we take our toxicity values for each individual chemical, we may, we then make assumptions about how much exposure, um, people have. We make assumptions about the frequency, the duration, so in terms of air, we're talking about air here, how many liters per day of air people breathe, how, um, many hours per day they're breathing the air. If we were talking about drinking water, it would be how many liters of water per day someone was drinking and for how many years. Those are the assumptions about exposure. We have, we don't, we don't have to develop these necessarily for every single situation. We have default or standard exposure assumptions that we use that again, come generally from the federal government and they're based on studies of large numbers of people. They allow us to choose assumptions that reflect generally the, the, the upper end of the, of a range of what a typical range might be. So the outcome of our risk assessment will be, um, what is the, how risky, how, how likely is it that exposures to the level of contaminants, again, in the ambient air, in people, in places where people are, how likely is it that those concentrations were high enough to potentially cause, um, health effects? When we are finished with our evaluation, which will take a few weeks, two, three weeks, from the time we get the air concentration data from Deep, we are, we would plan to come and present those, um, results to, to you all in whatever forum you would like. And that's sort of risk assessment in a, in a nutshell.
Thank you, appreciate that, great explanation of everything she'll be doing. Anyone, uh, so, local health, anything, Charles?
They got the show right now.
Got it, got it, got it, got it. I think that's the last of our, right, Ryan, present, presentations? So we'll, uh, we'll go over to our Q and A session now, if, please, if you, you have to come up, uh, state your, your name and address and please, if you could keep your, you know, comments to maybe three, three minutes or so, Ryan, Ryan, how you doing? comments to maybe three minutes or so, Ryan, how you doing?
I took a few notes, and I won't be too long. Honestly, I'm pretty happy right now. Last meeting was starting to feel like we were making progress, but now it really feels like we're cooking with gas, and I really appreciate everything that you're doing. I told you I'd buy you a beer, I still stand by that. I'm not a mean guy, I know we've had some contention over here too, but this is what we're pushing. A data-driven result. So I do just have a few questions. Some can't be answered because Jonathan dropped, but maybe we could table those.
So we can, we can, we can, we'll take notes and we'll, we'll get back to him, yeah.
Yeah, Ryan.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, alright.
I don't like this spotlight, by the way. I know people think I do, I don't. The fans, so are those fans going to be replaced with the RTO? Or is it going to be using that same existing fan that they had? That was my primary question.
Yeah, I, I think he's, they're working on the fans, or are they, I don't know if they're replacing them or repairing them. You've talked to him a lot, Jonathan.
Yeah, I, I do communicate with Jonathan almost on a weekly basis at this point. From what I understand, they're taking the existing, the fan that is in place, the, the exhaust fan that's, was creating that 28-hertz low-frequency noise, they are bead blasting that fan to, to decrease the resistance, as well as, as Jonathan stated, they're flying out people from the manufacturer to, to recalibrate and rebalance the fan. So I don't know if they're doing a full replacement, but they're doing everything that they can to make sure that that's not going to be a noise issue going forward.
Okay, I guess my question is, I thought RTOs come with their own fan systems, and this is not me being a know-it-all, that's just what I read. So I am questioning if they're using the same problematic fan, all good, that sounded great? And they're going to try to fix it, or if it's going to be something new, so that, that's my.
I can ask that.
I was going to ask.
Well, ask Jonathan that.
There's likely more than one fan. You know, there's a fan inside, mostly with the RTO possibly, but this, the exhaust fan still needs to be on the outside of the building too.
Yeah, I think the exhaust fans were, where the noise is coming from, right, or where the, I think the material comes in there, they probably are exhausting that, you know, some of that, but, but we'll find out, we'll get that answer from Jonathan.
And then I actually took a note on this, but then I have a big thank you with nine million exclamation mark marks on the exhaust permit, right, because that was a huge point of contention, at least for me, a couple months ago, when we found that out. So thank you very much for updating. For those that don't know, that's, that's huge. Right, because I'd argue a lot of these meetings and discussions that we are having, wouldn't have been needed, or it would have been at different timeframes, had that been required upfront. I feel like that was a big miss, we'll leave it at that, I want to, no negativity today, okay? But that is huge. My question to that ties into both of you, DPH and the DP, right? So once this is all in place, are there certain governing measures where you guys have to go back on a certain cadence that tie into that permit specifically? Right, so is it just an initial check and balance? Is it a quarterly, is it a annual, see where I'm going with that? Okay, alright, cool. And then on the sound, and this is, I promise I'd be quick. So I see Tessa's on. Tessa, I, I know you think I'm probably a madman, we've had some funny conversations from these sound tests, but I've been doing a lot of sound tests overnight because I still cannot sleep. So this week I was up twice, I went and did sound tests at 3:45 in the morning, and I was the first one to defend Brightfeeds, right? I did, I said I was wrong.
You were a week or so ago after we met, yeah, you did, yeah.
And part of the reason why I didn't know originally that I was wrong is because I didn't want to get too close to the building and be trespassed. But I figured out why I was wrong, right? So, and it was in, it was an honest mistake. So I did go on the power lines, right? Because that, Brightfeeds doesn't own that. And what I found, Tessa, and I specifically want you to hear this, right? I've done 20-plus tests at this point in the last couple of weeks. The reason why I think Brightfeeds is getting, it's compounding the issue, is if you listen in the middle of the night, specifically between 2:00 and 4:00 in the morning, on those power lines, there is a sound billowing from Christian Lane, that direction, right, the Deming Road, Christian Lane direction. So I think that compounded with Brightfeeds running overnight, might have actually had two issues. So, I didn't stop there. I went to Asa Alboy, I went to all the, literally everywhere. Did a case study numerous nights. And right in front of CWPM, I'm getting about 110 DBCs, which is insane. Brightfeeds on its worst day was about 90 to 95. Okay? I'm getting upwards of 110 DBCs. So what I did is I reached out to CWPM. I said, hey, I didn't think you guys run overnight. They were very, very nice, they said, we don't. So I just want to give this data point to Tessa, and she's the expert, that if she could focalize, because if I go towards Fairview, if I go back down Deming, if I go further down Christian Lane, it, it goes down. Something in that area is focalizing. The fact that CWPM says they're not running, and it's that high, it, it's possible, and I was discussing it with them, that it's that recycling company next to them, not, not that we need another problem with the recycling company. But if you, and I've done a lot of work with my business in the back dumping at CWPM, but if you, if you've been back there, they have a big berm built up, right? So technically speaking, that sound could be hitting that berm and then just flying straight down towards Brightfeeds. So again, I did defend Brightfeeds, but that is a problem, because again, this is where I'm honest, my wife doesn't hear it. I literally, and that makes me think I'm losing my mind even more, right? I'm like, what's wrong with me? I, I, do I have a problem, right? But then other people started to say that they were hearing it, but I know you guys mentioned that it's a low, like just enough for humans to be impacted.
The one she just measured, the other, like.
It does like vibrate my ears as well. And we're used to the turnpike traffic, we've all lived there, many of you guys lived there 40-plus years. That's not what we're saying, but specifically between 2:00, more, more like 2:00 and 4:30 in the morning, you'll hear it over everything. It's insane, a lot for those that can.
Hear it.
Hear it. So I just wanted to give that data point to Tessa. I've been up, I've been doing these, these tests. I would love to get sleep, if they want to do them in my house, they're more than, well, I hear it through the walls. I mean, I am now sleeping in my basement in a corner. I'm not lying, my wife, God, it struck me dead, I am, with a sound machine on that I bought from Walmart. Right, so something has got to give with it. Not that it's not Brightfeeds, but again, I want to give that data.
Is that every day, Ryan?
So it shuts down usually on Sunday, we get a bit of a reprieve. That's, honestly, that's why I thought it was CWPM as well, because they run Monday through Saturday. So I don't know about the recycling company next to it, but that, that DBC range is insane, like if you Google it, that's equivalent to being at a rock concert. Like that, that's, that's very, very high. Uh, yeah. I want to sound like an auto, so I, they, some of them are, but for the most part, I sat in their lot. Because they didn't know who I was, right? And I go there with my business, so I'm like, they're not going to know. And I watched their operations, and then most of them come in about 4:00, 4:30. Right, and most of us that are still hearing it between, usually 2:00 to 3:00 AM, people have their sleep cycles, right? They, they actually are showing sleep cycles that mirror the sound, the timeframes that I'm saying, right? And this is not me looking for problems. I want to be able to sleep in my own house. Right, this is just absolutely crazy at this point. Now, the question is, is it, Tessa, if she can't answer it, it's fine today?
Yeah.
But the question I have is, once somebody becomes more aware of these sounds, like Brightfeeds might have started the problem, am I now more aware of it?
Yeah.
Right, like that's what I don't know. Am I now more susceptible to the sound because I'm searching for it? Right, subconsciously? So again, she doesn't have to answer that, but I'd be curious on that, but this is huge, and I did see something with the state, how there's potentially pursuing low-frequency legislation, but the. Okay, but I did see that, so I was hopeful, because this is, it's definitely a problem, but anyways, that's it. Thank you, thank you all very much.
Right, appreciate it, Ryan. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Name is Jim Ostraski, I'm an employee at Task Report. I got a question, Jake. You were supposed to have the results of the particle testing. Did you get those results at all?
Uh, yeah, let me just answer into the mic so everyone can hear it, but I'll, I'll add that to the list.
Alright, yeah, that's the only thing I have.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions, folks? Questions, thoughts, comments? Online, is there any, no hands raised online? This point, no, no one, okay. So Jake, you want to answer? If you have some answers to those questions? Appreciate it.
Yeah, so I'll start with the particulate testing. Or is, so again, we require testing for volatile organic compounds, total VOC, the gas, and then speciated VOC, so we know the specific gases that are being emitted. And then total particulate matter, both filterable particulate matter and condensable particulate matter. So we do have the results for that testing, it's all raw data, and then we do a lot of calculations. And of course, we double-check and triple-check our calculations. And then after we're done with the calculations, in order to determine the, the mass emission rate of, of particulate matter and VOC from the stack, that's when we do the modeling for DPH. So permitting, the, the, the initial results indicate that permitting is triggered for volatile organic compounds. For particulate matter, there's a state permitting threshold, and then a federal permitting threshold, which is even higher, and they appear to fall below both of the thresholds. They're still going to get a permit, it doesn't change anything, because they already need a permit for, for volatile organic compounds. But the, the PM emission rates were lower than our regulatory thresholds for permitting. And then Ryan, your question about, like, is it just they get the permit and it's over? So, no, the permit will require periodic emission testing, very similar to the emission testing that, that we required. We kind of, you know, what we required a couple months ago was, was kind of a survey, and then we can hone in on what we really want to see moving forward. But it will be, they'll have to do periodic emission testing, you know, in perpetuity, as, as long as they're around. The, the permit would also require ongoing monitoring, so monitoring of process parameters that, you know, have an access to emissions, so they'd have to monitor and, and record various process parameters. And, yeah, we, we have obviously inspection authority, so it's not like the permit's going to be issued, we're going to be, you know, never come to Berlin again, or, right? That, that couldn't be farther from the truth. You also have my cell phone number, so you can call me if, if there's a concern. I think that was all the questions, although if you had anything else about the particulate.
I was just trying to figure out if there's stuff coming out of that stack.
Yeah, there, I mean, yeah, and there's particles coming out of, you know, a lot of things, but yes, there, there is particulate coming out of the stack. But, but the, the initial number was, it was far beneath even the state permitting threshold, which is considerably beneath the federal permitting threshold.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
So obviously, to be continued, I thought we all got some good updates tonight. If last one last shot, any other questions while the experts are here, now would be your time. If not, we'll go ahead and, I think we should pick another meeting date. So what are we talking, what did we say, mid-April? The equipment was going to be online. So maybe a little bit later in April, so we have a good update? Maybe, I don't know, let's look at April here, see what we got, folks.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we should take into consideration too, when they might have some numbers from DPH.
Yes, yeah, all of that, yeah.
So maybe we can try and coordinate a date to have a better update.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Look at April 30th?
Their 23rd or 30th, I guess, yeah, right, I mean.
30th would give them enough time to.
I would think, based upon what we've heard, the 30th, we should have, yeah.
Do you think that gives you guys enough?
Wednesday.
Okay.
What's that? Yeah.
I mean, it's a lot of math.
Yes.
It's a lot of math.
Got it. Yeah, got it. Yeah, that makes sense, though? We could, we could go to the, the first week in May, first full week if, if you want. Yeah, but I mean, that's fine, the, which would be the 7th? The 7th, we could do the 7th, or, you can do the 7th? You what? Or, or, or the 30th? You know, let, let's leave it at the 30th, let's see what happens, you know, we'll, we'll certainly have a better feel for it, right? By mid-April, and we could always get that out to the public and change that date if we need to, if nothing really has been completed. I mean, there's no reason to sit here and say it's not done yet, right? So let's leave, let's leave the 30th, if that works for.
There is a question.
Yes, yes.
Catherine Measley? Do you want to unmute?
Yes.
Hi, thank you, Catherine Meese, 15 Main Street East, Berlin. I have a question about the VOCs specifically. I know that you're still analyzing the data at, at Deep, and I understand that the Department of Health has not yet received it, but is there, simply based on the fact that the VOC thresholds are telling you that a permit is required, is there enough data to tell us what the worst compounds or the, the most, the compounds that you're seeing the highest levels of are, so that we can, those of us concerned about health impacts can kind of educate ourselves in the meantime? Thank you for the, taking the question.
Yeah, thank you.
So I can answer half of the question, the other half of the question is pending further analysis by DPH. The most prevalent VOC is ethanol, far and away. And then as far as the most toxic, that's pending, you know, EPH analysis, if there is, you know, toxicity. Okay. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, i- in terms of assessing what chemical may be the most toxic, it's really not possible to know that, because all we have right now is what's coming out of the stack, not what's in the ambient air, and there's a lot of dilution and dispersion. So I really would not want to try to jump ahead and predict without, you know, seeing the data that we're working with. But ethanol, yes, that's, that is, as Jake said, that's the, the, what's being emitted at the, in the largest amount out of the stack.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you. Anyone else before we, yes, sir, one more time, Ryan? Alright. So, okay.
Obviously, all the measures, Ryan Malloy, 84 June. All the measures that were, have been put in place have mitigated a lot of this, right? And I'm not saying we want to go search for problems, but is that scalable, right? Because when you guys tested, it was nowhere near bad days, right? And that's no disrespect. So, and I'm not saying that we want to assume or say they were talking hypotheticals, right? If it was 15 times worse or 10 times worse smell that day, to the point where it felt like a blanket was holding me down, my yard, I was getting headaches, which I just Googled as a side effect of that. Is there something that we could get that would show the bad days versus the good days? Again, not saying Brightfeeds is doing that today, or they ever have, but something that would at least make us a little more safe.
No, it is, but we were just, um, so for testing, when they actually did the test back in January, we did a lot of work beforehand to ensure that testing would occur under representative operating conditions, and that, that there is really two elements of, of representiveness at Brightfeeds. It was the process rate, like the tons per hour that they're processing, and the feeds, the specific feedstocks that they're processing. So in order to ensure that they were running at a maximum process rate, which we define as within 90% of the, the maximum rate at which they can run. And in order to ensure that they were processing representative feedstocks during the testing. and in order to ensure that they were processing representative feedstocks during the testing, we looked at, um, uh, various records, shipping records, um, records that had a nexus to process rate, in order to define the conditions of the test program before it took place. That's why we had four staff on site, so, um, we'd been out to the facility, you know, like as you know many times before. So we had staff on the tipping floor, making sure that the feedstocks looked like what we typically see there, that it wasn't all, you know, clean quote-unquote material. We had, um, staff that's been doing this job for, for a long time, monitoring the, the, the process to make sure, again, that it was running at a, a maximum rate. So, um, I think we're, we're pretty comfortable with the fact that, that, again, the testing occurred under representative operating conditions. As to the odors on the particular day of the test program, I mean, remember, there's all sorts of things that can influence, I mean, I'm not trying to, you know, you know this, um, but ju- just, I mean, there's all sorts of things that can, uh, influence odor, including meteorology, that's really important. When we do the modeling for DPH, right? We make worst-case assumptions. So there's various way, there's various emission rates, for example, that we could use for ethanol. We're going to do the one that we believe to be the most representative, and then we're going to, we were just talking about this like, you know, an hour ago. And then we're going to make a, a, um, much more conservative, a, 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 a worst, uh, you know, a worst-case assumption as to the ethanol, um, emission rate. And, you know, we model an annual average, we're also going to model a highest 24-hour average using five years of past meteorological data, it might not be exactly five, but in that neighborhood. So there are assumptions that we make when we're taking, again, we're very comfortable with the stack test data, right? I don't have any reason not to be comfortable with the stack test data. And then when we go to model the ambient concentrations from the stack concentrations, which is a computer model that's, you know, EPA-developed, EPA maintains, it's been around for, it's, it's the authoritative model. We make very conservative assumptions, um, in the modeling runs. So hopefully that gives you some comfort, I know. Yeah.
Jake, is it, is it possible, because I know that they stopped taking in the dough, raw dough and, and the frozen pasta. Was that stopped before the testing? Because maybe that's why the odor was, no, so they were still taking that in at that time? Okay.
We specifically made sure they were taking raw dough, frozen pasta during the test. Just due to the, you know, um, possibility that those feedstocks could give rise to.
Okay, I just didn't know when that stopped compared to when the testing was.
That stopped when we got the very, the first, like, uh, after the testing, we got the, the very first preliminary test results and, um, a- at that point, that's when the processing of the raw dough and, and, um, frozen pasta largely stopped.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. So we're back to the, the date there, just so, why don't we, let's leave it at the 30th for now? If we don't think there's that much to report by the 30th, or, you know, we're off a week or two, we could always push it and we could put a little update out there, you know, before then and just say, hey, here's what's going on, that we don't have these results yet, or this, or here's what we have. And then maybe by, you know, if we push it into early May, we might have everything done. Test data, everything's installed, and, you know, we could go from there. So we'll leave it on the 30th and, you know, we'll, we'll definitely get it out there if we're going to change it and we'll put out an update, you know, obviously, in, in Berlin, uh, you know, on our website and Facebook and get all that out there. Does that make sense? So we'll keep the 30th for now for in-person, change it, we'll, we'll let you know, move it a week or two. Anyone else? Last shot? Okay, we're good, everybody good? Thank you certainly to our state partners, our, our health district, thank you all for coming. I think it was, uh, we got some good, more information tonight, uh, and we appreciate it. And, um, you know, more to tell the story coming up next few weeks, so, thank you very much. Yes, vote to adjourn, yes. All those in favor? Foes, right, so moved. Alright, thank you, folks.